Goffstown Water Selectmen's Meeting, June 6, 2011. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 and there was a brief on public and we're back into public. And we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so everybody please rise. Nick, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item of business is the acceptance of correction of the public minutes at 5:23. I assume it's 2011, not 111.
So moved.
I wasn't here then.
You weren't?
No. Bob may have been, but I wasn't.
I'll move to accept the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Next item, announcements. We have a few announcements and an acceptance of a $500 donation from the Rotary Club for Grassmere Statue Trust Fund in commemoration of the 250th. So we're going to need a motion for that acceptance.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Announcements? We have a few. I know we have a road announcement. It's a saturation patrol. I don't know if I have that.
Last one, in section three.
Okay, so one of them that we have is the appreciation letter from Hillsborough, thank you Nick. Hillsborough County letter to Officer Chapdeline. And it's from the Department of Human Services and its attention prosecutor, Carrie Stekowicz. Dear Mr. Stekowicz, it is with greatest pleasure that I write you this letter, as it is to recognize the efforts made by your colleague, Officer Kevin Chapdeline. Very often and due to the impact of decentization, we may neglect to interact and engage with people who are or may be exhibiting behaviors or responding to stimuli in a manner that may, might be considered inconsistent with the general norm. Officer Chapdeline notably interacted with a youth in a manner that acted as its own intervention. His intervention alone provided the catalyst for motivation and change within this youth who was now inspired to complete his set goals. This is a great feat and of itself and cannot go without recognition. Officer Chapdeline has been an asset to your agency as well as to ours. We greatly appreciate his fortitude and effort in working with members of the Goffstown community. Sincerely, Janine A. Pablo, M S M A C A G S M L A D C, Family Therapist, Hillsborough County Family Intervention Program. Well done. Another item is to Scott Bartlett, our town assessor. And it's, Dear Scott, I have received your letter dated April 27, 2011 regarding our abatement request. We wanted to take this opportunity to express our gratitude for your thorough inspection and detailed explanation when you visit us. We appreciate it. It's always a pleasure to deal with a professional that takes his job seriously. Thank you. And that's signed. Sincerely, a Goffstown resident. And I'll do the saturation one and Sue, the last one, I'll leave for you since it's to you. Okay, thank you. It's a regional DWI saturation patrol. It's a news release dated June 1st. Hillsborough County, the combined efforts of police agencies involved in the regional saturation patrol over the holiday weekend yielded nearly 175 motor vehicle stops in search of the impaired driver. Arrests for DWI resulted in four of those motor vehicle stops, while arrests were also made for drivers operating after their license was suspended, as well as one weapons violation. Special assigned patrols for the holiday weekend were added in Goffstown, Bedford, Dunbarton, and New Boston. The New Hampshire State Police and the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office also had designated patrol officers assigned to the general region to combat the effects of impaired drivers. And the last one, Sue?
Yes, this is a letter I received from the New Hampshire Retirement System. I wish to extend my thanks to your office for the assistance provided during my recent visit to complete the audit of the town of Goffstown's records for the New Hampshire Retirement System. I would especially like to thank Linda Moody for her undivided attention before, during, and after the onsite visit. She was very gracious and all of the assistance she provided was invaluable in finalizing this outstanding audit. Based on her review of contributions for random sampling and the testing of payroll data for the period February 22, 2010 through March 21, 2010, it would appear that enrollment and remittance procedures are in compliance with New Hampshire Retirement System requirements. I'd like to remind your office that employer-sponsored long- or short-term disability payments are still required to be reported, but due to a recent decision, the New Hampshire Retirement System will no longer require salary continuance forms to be completed if you report those wages electronically. Encloses the compliance report, which I did not enclose here, but so we successfully completed it and Linda was an integral part of that.
Right. Thank you very much. And we appreciate the work that Linda does. Comment?
I have another announcement.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I got an email this weekend that unfortunately there was a little bit of an accident on the girl softball field. Two girls collided and unfortunately a girl broke her wrist. Fortunately however, Lieutenant Mark Lemay was in the stands watching the game and Tom Nault, who was also active, well he's a Concord firefighter, but also-
Lieutenant.
He's a lieutenant here as well. And there's another woman, Deb, I don't know her last name, but all three of them treated both girls like on the spot. Ambulance came within minutes and the parents were obviously concerned about their daughter, but ecstatic about what a great community Goffstown is, how people rush to treat their both girls. And goes to show that you're always on duty when you're, you know, a call person on the fire department or EMT. So just wanted to thank those three individuals. They made a tremendous impact on the people there that day.
Great. Great, nice job. Anything else? One more?
One more. Since we have such an audience, I will let them know that on Friday, June 17, Greg, we'll be having our anniversary cake. It'll be, it's Goffstown's 250th anniversary. That is the day. And all the selectmen here, and although Selectman Fornier's not here, we will all be dressing up in colonial costumes, serving cake to all of you. It starts at 6:30 and there'll also be a duet band starting at 7 o'clock. So I'd like to wish everyone in the community to come and take pictures with Nick because I know that that's one of the reasons why Nick decided to get the costume, was to take pictures with children and adults.
Oh absolutely.
Yeah. So it should be a good time and if it does rain, it'll be at Maple Avenue School. So I just wanted to do a quick plug for that. And it's not too late for those of you who want to get your gala ball tickets. I know Gary Drolman is here and I do have the tickets here, Gary, so afterwards.
The location of the cake cutting?
Oh, it'd be on the Town Common.
The cake cutting?
The cake cutting's in the Town Common and the dance is at St. Anselm's.
Okay. And what was that I heard about a frosty costume for Steve Rooney? Oh, okay.
Colonial.
Do you have one more?
No, that was it.
You sure?
Positive.
Okay. Okay, moving on. Next item will be public comment. At this time, we take comments from members of the public who are not scheduled for agenda We just ask that you try to be brief. We seem to have quite a few people. I don't know if they're all here for public comment or some of the other items that might be on the agenda, but if there's somebody who would like to make a comment, please do. You can come up here and we're going to need your name for the, for the, Mark, we're going to need your name for the, for the public record.
Mark Morris, I live at 39 East on Barton Road.
Have a seat.
Okay. The hot seat. I know they're supposed to be doing some roadwork on East on Barton Road, but it's come to the point where we can't even sleep in the morning. The traffic starts 4:30, 5 o'clock, the trucks, kabang, kabang, kabang. I don't know if there's something that the board can do to change the hours that the trucks are running or something like that, but it's impossible to sleep there anymore.
Mark, not to interrupt you, but just a question. I know that Public Works did some patchwork last year. When they did the patchwork, did that improve anything at the time?
Very little. I mean, the frost heaves don't even leave after the winter's gone anymore. As you know, because you drive the road too. The road's in horrible shape. I mean, it's not even safe for kids to ride a bike on anymore. And I'm just wondering if there's something we could do to quiet the noise down because I talked to the highway department this morning and they said that they, if there's enough funds left at the end of the year, they could skim code it. Well, that's just a temporary patch and that's not going to quiet the noise down. I mean, they might as well save their money for when they go to reclaim the road.
I don't know, I don't know at this point what to tell you because it is right about the schedule, but I think-
I know if they run out of the money at the end of the season, I mean, I have to live here. My family's up all the time because of the noise. We have several companies that run dumpsters, demolition companies that run dumpsters up and down that road. Anybody that's hauling a little trailer, utility trailer, you hear, it's constant noise.
And the road is very active. I mean-
It's more active than some that I've seen repaved, you know, in the past.
Yeah, but a lot of people just think that it's East Dunbarton Road, it's out in the east part, but it is, it's a main road between-
Right.
Goffstown, Concord, Dunbarton, Bow, and Hooksit. And it is heavily trafficked.
I mean, it even gets used by tractor trailers, you know, the big ones you see on the highway. I mean, it's pretty bad.
Right. At this point, Dave, I don't know if you have any-
I mean, they-
...update on that?
Your comments are solely on East Dunbarton Road?
Yes.
Right, at the Manchester line to Montalona.
I think that there's a growing concern, not only amongst yourself, but of other residents with regard to some of the roads in town. Unfortunately, what we've been trying to do with, you know, try to keep the tax rate in check with the economy was, that's where we've, you know, it's been impacted and that's one of the bad things, is that we have, we've deferred some of the maintenance on roads. And I'm not saying it's a great decision, but when times are tough, which they've been over the last two to three years, we have certainly slowed down the number of roads which we're reclaiming and doing repairs to. And it's going to take us a little bit longer, you know, to catch up. And hopefully as the economy improves, we'll be able to get, you know, back on and spend, you know, more money, more money to do that. But I know that's, I get complaints on my road and people like, you're a selectman and this is how bad your road is. So I hear, I hear the same things, but we're just trying, we have to get over this economic hump, in my opinion. I don't speak for the board, but, so we can, you know, and then, you know, put more money towards the road program. Over the last couple of years, I think we've cut about a million dollars from what it used to be in order to try to keep the tax rate.
I appreciate Mark bringing another aspect of our roads to our attention, to the board's attention. Typically, we look at the engineering properties of the roads and you're bringing to our attention is the volume of traffic and the time of the traffic. And we need to consider that as well.
Right. I was just wondering if there's any way, I mean, a lot of towns do it, they have it on the Goffstown back road going into Manchester, putting it certain times to run big trucks. That's the problem. It's the big trucks that are causing all the problems.
That's an item we could discuss.
Yeah, typically though, highway safety?
Yeah. I don't know. The reason why is by the time, highway safety may-
Be six months.
You know, for the time, but the board has heard the comment. And I think if perhaps if we could talk to our individual department heads and perhaps they can come up with some type of a solution, whether part of it might be if there's one or two spots that are very, very bad by that part of the road, if those can be patched again, you know, hopefully to get you through the summer.
Which is not unprecedented. I mean, last year, we did like little pieces of Tibbetts Hill Road that were in horrible shape.
Well, this was patched two, this was patched two years ago.
No, I'm saying there were little pieces that were entirely reclaimed and drainage put in, but not the whole course of the road.
Well, you've done, you've done the upper end of East Dunbarton Road, probably, that was probably about eight years ago.
Yeah. And I think the issue is, and again, I'm not to diminish your situation, but, you know, Addison Road, Shirley Hill, I mean, there's a lot of roads in town. Page Hill, I get a lot of complaints about Page Hill Road, Norman, you know, there's, I mean, unfortunately, we've got like a dozen of these roads that are in rough shape, you know.
They should check the volume because this road is very heavily trafficked, you know. It's got a lot of traffic on it.
Yeah, no, I know and the police department will verify what you're saying, that it, the volume of traffic on it, but we'll look into it and see what we can do.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody?
If you can, may I? You can nab one for this lady.
Sure, go ahead. We're going to need your name for the record.
Yep, Airmore Settlement, 65 East Dunbarton Road. And I'll take the hot seat next, I suppose. Just to kind of reiterate what my brother is saying is that it's really becoming imperative that we take some course of action in regards to the condition of that road. It doesn't necessarily mean that the entire road has to be reclaimed. We have to really focus on more isolated pockets of trouble. And those troubles are, trouble areas are the culverts. The culverts are failing. They're dropped down below grade, which is causing a major depression during the summer months. During the winter months, they all freeze up because the culverts have failed. So now we're getting a big frost heat. At 65, where I live, approximately not even 85 feet from the main culprit, culvert section, I've seen vehicles lose material in the back of their trucks. I've seen guys get their ladders thrown out of the back of their trailers. I've seen cordwood hit the ground, rough stone, all types of things. My kids won't ride their bicycles on that road. They like Lindsay Way. They'd rather pedal up Lindsay Way than drive in front of the house. During the winter, it's worse. During the winter, when the, really the frost sets in, I'm looking at readjusting my TV that's mounted on the wall at least once a week. Because the tremors that come through the house are so severe, not to mention the early AM traffic, plus the PM traffic, you can't have a family life with that type of annoyance going on. And it just seems like we can talk about the financial aspect of it and wait till the economy gets better, but face it, the economy has always been a struggle regardless. We have to deal with it the best we can. So I'm not really here to say reclaim the road. I'm here to say, let's make the best of the situation, maybe conserve a little bit of money, fix the culvert sinking in the two spots. One, just as you come over to Dunbarton, to the Goffstown, Manchester line, and the one just before Lindsay Way. You've already done the section that's after the demolition company, who is one of the really big contributors in the environmental issue of the noise pollution and the nuisance. So really, that's all I'm asking for, is just take a look at that section there. We don't have to plant daisies or anything like that. And if need be, if you need more reassurance, I'll videotape it. So you really have a firsthand account, what happens every single day, seven days a week. It's not just isolated Monday through Friday between 8:00 AM and 9:00, it's all day long. Trucks going back and forth, two 18-wheelers this week, and it's not even Friday. So put yourself in that situation, you have to live to that, next to that, every day with your family and try and have a barbecue, go play badminton. You know, it's the type of sound that wakes you from your sleep and wonder, oh my God, a plane just came through the roof. And it didn't. And you have to get up and go, oh, it's just that darn culvert again, you know? And the traffic volume is a lot higher there, I would perceive, than a Norman Road situation. Shirley Hill, fine, but they have a final destination. East Dunbarton Road is a pass-through and it connects three major towns together, Dunbarton, you know, Concord, Bow, and that section of Goffstown there. So that's a high-traffic route. And that traffic has increased dramatically over the years because the economy, so people are reaching out, they're working out of their homes now. So that involves bringing in lots of different equipment. Trailers, dump trucks, trailers that are hauling backhoes, heavy equipment, never mind what the weight restrictions could be on the road. It doesn't matter because they're still going to commute it anyways. They have to make a living somehow. But that section of road is actually disturbing our way of living in that whole section. So that's my two cents on that part.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, may I? I'd like to go out to those locations with Public Works official and I'll bring a report there.
Sure, that's fine. Again, we're going to need your name for the record.
My name is Matt Lavalle, L A V A double L double E. I live at 83 Violet Street in Manchester, New Hampshire. I did print up some maps of where I live. I don't know if that's of any interest to you. Just so you have an idea of the tiny road that I live on. Thank you for letting me speak today. I appreciate the time. I'm here today to request the removal of a border sign installed on my lawn on Tuesday, May 24, 2011. I live in a residential neighborhood on Violet Street off of Rockland Ave. It is a small road that is basically a horseshoe that turns into Wilkins Street and heads right back to Rockland, as you can see on the map. The only people that travel this road are residents of the area that are well aware of where they are and where they are going. I do not, I feel the sign does not add anything to the area and it may detract from the neighborhood atmosphere that we live. Thus, I am concerned about the impact of my property value having this obstruction in my yard. I fully acknowledge that these signs are important for roads well-traveled to assist motorists with understanding when they enter a new town. However, in my residential neighborhood, this is not an issue. I would like to request the sign be removed from my property and I would be happy to pay for any costs associated with removing it. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any questions?
Any questions?
I would just also point out that there are, in our package, pictures of those locations.
And I'd like to point out that the sign post is on the public right of way.
Yep, I understand that. And I understand you have the absolute right to have it there.
Matt, you did emphasize my property. Well, it's the public right of way.
It's your property, correct.
Thank you.
I think his point is that it's in front of his property.
Correct. And I need to maintain the grass around the sign.
It's on the borderline between your property and your neighbor.
Yes.
Just to, Nick, if I may. Dave, there's a footnote that it says will be moved four feet to the right. That, the picture that we have here is going to be moved?
The sign was originally put in at my request technically right on the boundary line, which was very near to the front of your house.
Yes.
And upon your, I mentioned to your wife that I could move it to the boundary line between your property and your neighbor.
Yes.
And she felt comfortable with that initially and so we did that.
And I do appreciate that.
But then the Public Works put it in within a foot of the pavement, which would have been damaged by snow. So barring some decision here tonight, the next action would have been to move it four feet in, but still on-
From the road.
Still on. And you'll see a stake in my picture indicating the new location.
Scott?
You know, for what it's worth, I mean, again, I just looked at these photographs tonight for the first time. Three-quarters of these signs make sense to me. Another, the other 25% do not make any sense to me. I don't, I don't know if there's a statutory reason to have them, but this gentleman's is probably one in which I don't understand why there's one. I mean, there are a lot here that make complete sense. Wallace Road, Choppahill, Parker Road. These are major thoroughfares. But this one here, just, again, it's in front of someone's, it doesn't seem like it makes, and then now putting it in context, it just doesn't make sense.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but one thing is that the board did authorize them. And one other thing too, just to point out, one of the issues that we have are revenues that we collect for Goffstown. And what, where did you say you lived?
On Violet Street?
Yeah, where?
Oh, in Manchester.
Thank you.
The house, your house is physically in Manchester. The boundary is like two or three feet-
I pay taxes to both towns.
Both, because there's a sliver of your land in Goffstown.
Yes.
Yeah. But I think-
I do pay taxes.
Yes. And I understand that, I just, when we voted on it, I didn't, I didn't know if we'd be putting on every, I mean, I didn't envision something like that.
Well, that's what the request was.
That's what you get with an engineer on the board.
No, I understand that.
If I lived on Rockland, I wouldn't complain because I would understand there are people driving, they may not know where they are. And Rockland is an area where someone could say, oh, I'm in Goffstown now, so it would make sense.
Nick, question to David.
David, is there a statutory requirement that we have, signs at every street, at every border?
I'm not aware of that requirement.
So the board would have leeway?
Well, I think at this point, the only thing I can do is that we'll take your request under advisement.
Okay.
We'll have to see what we can do.
Okay.
Have some further research on it.
Okay.
Okay.
Should I come back to one of these meetings or would I be notified? Or what would be the next step with the resolution?
It's being discussed this evening.
Yeah, but I don't think we're going to be able to get to that, the questions about the requirements on that forum, but Nick?
I was going to suggest if we were to get contact information and then if Sue could email him when it was going to be on our agenda, this way you would know.
That would be great.
Yeah, we'll do that.
You could write it on the sign-up sheet there, your full name and your contact information.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
You're quite welcome, thank you. Any other further public comment?
Can I just add one thing? I want to put proper context around some of this. The reason why we voted for this is because we had numerous roads-
We're going to be discussing this now.
We are, okay.
It's on the agenda for the record. Sir?
Good evening.
Good evening. We're going to need your name for the record.
Yep, my name is Jeff Lichfield. I live in Hopkinson, New Hampshire, and I'm here to talk about the proposed ban on parking at Glen Lake. Would this be in appropriate time or sure?
Yes, sir. Yep.
Okay. I'm here for a couple of reasons. I was in communication with Selectman Pierce over the winter when I heard about the proposed because I'm the president of Blue Steel Triathlon Club. We're based out of Manchester. I saw the minutes from a couple of meetings ago and I saw it was discussed, actually my email was public, made public. I want to talk about the group itself and why we use Glen Lake. We, we're a group of approximately 70 adults in the greater Manchester area. I look today, our mean age is 46. And we've been using the lake for, since about five, six years because it's a center point from where people live. And we meet in the early morning and we go off the, I believe it's the beach technically. We park in the spots that are in front of the beach area and we swim in the morning. We typically get in the water, depending on who you are, somewhere between 5:00 and we usually out of the water by 8, 9 o'clock, depending, Monday through Friday. We stay away from the beach area on weekends because of, the times we go have very little boat traffic, so it's a safe place for us to go. We swim in a group and we consider ourselves a zero-impact group. We don't bring anything other than ourselves. We don't use the public waste facilities. I take that back. We do use the Portage Johns.
Okay.
So we are using the facility. And from reading the minutes in the meetings, I can understand why the, why there's an issue in a couple of, we do spend a fairly good period of time during the summer cleaning up the beach area before and after our swims. And it's unfortunate. Either the garbage cans are full or people just choose not to use them. And it's unfortunate because it's a stain on the lake. But we enjoy the use of the facility. We're in and out. I personally live in Hopkinson and why do I swim at Glen Lake? Because I work in Manchester and so I take the back way to Manchester. I stop off for a swim. I'm a member of the Allerg Center, so I shower at the Y and then I go to work. And there's a lot of people in my situation who use the facility on their way to work or things like that. I think about a half dozen of us in the group are actually members, I'm sorry, are residents of Goffstown and the rest of us are residents of all the other surrounding communities. I was distressed to hear that we, the potential that we could not use the facility. It's a great asset to us and we felt like since we're not really impacting the community, and I don't think we're the ones being targeted for the actions. So I sent a letter, an email off to Selectman Pierce, kind of explaining my reasons. A couple of my suggestions, whether it be, you know, we have a, the club clean up the beach day or things, something we could do to get back to the town. Because I'm not a resident. I don't pay tax, property tax here. But perhaps an easier way to do it is just to amend the hours for the parking ban. The only people who were there in the five, six years that I've ever swam are the occasional boater and ourselves. There's never any cars parked at the facility. And we don't park at the school, you know, we don't, and we know better not to park across the street because we see what happens when people do with ticketing. So we, and if the, if the town could think about amending those hours, then I think it would, I think it'd accomplish what you're looking to do, which is to, you know, keep the beach clean, keep it for use for the residents. Especially for the parking. I think the residents should have priority and whether that's done on a permit basis or however you're going to do it. But, but if you keep a block where perhaps 11 o'clock at night to six, seven, eight, nine o'clock in the morning, it's open during the week, we could continue to use the facility. And that's what we're looking to do. That's what I wanted to say.
Yeah, just one question. Do you use it in the evening?
We do not. I, personally, we, our group does, typically does not.
Okay. I just wanted to get that on the record.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Did you have a question, Scott?
No. Depending on what other comments there are, I've got messages from two of your members and I'll read them later, depending on how, what volume we have here.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Anytime.
Thank you.
Hi, Christine Ganyan, and I am a Goffstown resident. I also swim, but I'm not actually a member of the group that Jeff was speaking about. I sort of make up a more looser affiliation of people that swim primarily Mondays, Wednesdays, and Friday mornings. But we pretty much follow the same timeframe, you know, in by six, out by nine. I know that some people will occasionally try to stop after work and swim, but if, you know, keeping the morning hours open means that's all that we can do, I think that we would be happy to, you know, at least know that we can have the morning time open. I mean, again, it's not a problem for me because I'm a resident. But we have a number of people who do swim with us who are not residents. And again, we don't, you know, we do sometimes find the beach in not a pretty condition. But, you know, we do do some cleaning up and we don't leave the mess and we pretty much park, go in and swim, come out and go home and get ready for work. I don't know about the 11 o'clock at night. I don't like the idea necessarily of the overnight being sort of open parking. But I don't know if there's like a, you know, dusk, I mean dawn to nine o'clock where residents can, non-residents can still park and use the beach. That would be helpful, so. Pretty much just saying the same thing, just with a different group of people.
Right.
So, that's it.
Would you mind, I'm writing your name so I can see you spell it?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Gary Giraudin. And I'm a member of the same group that Christine is. We call ourselves the Glen Lakers.
What's your name, sir?
Yeah, I will. I am not a resident of Goffstown, but I do work in Goffstown. And I enjoy swimming from about six to seven in the morning weekdays. And there's never any contention for parking places during those hours. In fact, when I was working today, I happened to drive from the S.A.U. office to Mountain View Middle School at 10 o'clock in the morning. And there wasn't a single car parked there. So I think our use of the, the lake and the parking in front of it is, doesn't impact any parking there. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gary.
Anyone else? Okay.
I have two short notes then.
We're all sort of here for the same, because I kind of heard all talking.
Okay. Okay, if you change your mind, we're going to have this open for the, you have a couple of things you want to read in for public comment?
Yes, I had two emails that were sent in on the same issue and so I'll conclude on those. This is from a Goffstown resident, Suzanne Boscler on Grady Hill Road. "I'm writing to you regarding the upcoming vote on the Glen Lake ordinance. I'm a Gofftown, Goffstown resident as well as part of a group that swims at Glen Lake in the early morning hours as part of our training for triathlon and swim races. I'm respectfully requesting that the ordinance be modified to allow non-resident parking, 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. The individuals that use the waterfront in the area at this time of day do not interfere with the latter day, later day visitors to the lake. They are, our neighbors, the members of the group are from New Boston, Bedford, Ware, Manchester, so forth. Several of them work in the Goffstown and patronize our shops and restaurants as they pass through town. It's a socially responsible group and takes care of the waterfront by picking up trash left by others and while leaving no trash ourselves." And the other message is from Deborah DeGroot, a resident in New Boston. "I'm contacting you regarding the proposed parking ban at Glen Lake. I'm one of many triathletes that use the lake in the early spring to late fall. I feel privileged to be able to use the lake to get my swim training done. The group that I swim with respect the lake, the parking, and the beach areas. We take time to clean up the trash when we see it and we usually arrive at 5:30 to 6:00 a.m. several times a week. I fully understand the proposed parking ban. I've driven by the lake on hot sunny days and I've noticed all the cars that might be parked everywhere. I understand the meeting is being held tonight to determine the times of the parking ban. I wanted to ask if the board might consider changing the time of the parking ban to be in place at 8:00 or 9:00 a.m. in the morning, as our group is usually through by 8:00 and, or 9:00 a.m. on the weekends." Would you pass those to the clerk?
Okay, is there anybody else who'd like to make a comment? You changed your mind.
I just had, I want to put my two cents into, my name is Dan King. I'm 11 Madison Road in Goffstown. I just want to say that I swim with the looser group on the Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And everybody kind of, not everybody swims on the same days because it is not a tight group. So there are times that, especially on the colder mornings, there may only be two or three people. And if the other two are non-residents, then I'd be swimming by myself, so that would be a safety issue there, so I just wanted to throw that out.
Okay, thank you very much.
He convinced me.
Okay. Anybody else? See that?
Just very briefly, my name is Lisa Richards. I live at 29 Merrill Road in Goffstown. And I too swim at Glen Lake a lot of mornings, been swimming there for 10 years prior to being a resident of Goffstown. I've been a resident for about eight years now. So when Jeff said he's been here for five, I've been here for double. And I agree, I would like to continue to be able to swim with my friends and not have to carpool from my house. But I would be willing to do that as well in order to make this a viable situation. So if, yes, that would be nice if we could amend the time for non-resident parking, 5:00 to 9:00 a.m. would be perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Going once, going twice? Last call. Three times. Public comments closed. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Scott?
Would you consider taking this, these things out of order and going right to that ordinance vote?
Well...
I say that because we have people in the audience. The chief is also here.
Actually, I've got, this first item, I've got the item here and I've got guys waiting. If we could bring that in and do that first?
Sure.
The artifact.
Yeah.
Yeah, the artifact. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. You're welcome. Hopefully we won't get any injuries on this one.
Can you put it right up on the table?
I don't think the table can handle it.
Minister Prime, yes, you would have had that...
Quick description, I appreciate that my guys taking their time and bringing this in for you folks to see. Requesting acceptance of this World Trade Center artifact. 2011, September 11th, 2001, we were attacked by terrorists. And Spiegel X and the World Trade Center fell victim along with the folks in Pennsylvania and the Pentagon. Back in 2009, a email went out to many fire departments across the country saying that they're looking to create artifacts from the leftover steel that was, that was salvaged from the World Trade Center. And I responded back, said that we might be interested. And just recently, this was delivered. It's a 125-pound piece of steel from the World Trade Center. It is a registered artifact. About only 1,000 artifacts were given out to fire departments across the country. And we're happy to, to accept this artifact with your blessing. It's something that the firefighters trove, hold dear and tear, dear and near to their hearts. New York City lost 343 firefighters that day. And I had the honor of going down and assisting their department with several funerals because they were still actively looking through the rubble for, for additional firefighters who were lost that day. So the firefighters also here in Goffstown have shown the interest. I know Lieutenant Cook, he'll be, he'll be working to fashion a, designing a base for this for display. My goal is that if it's accepted, that it's, it's an item that will be on display typically at the, at one of the fire stations. But again, as you can see with some muscle and some manpower, we can move it someplace. So for example, if the police, the police have an open house, we can, we can transport this artifact to the police station for that event, library for the Remembrance Day and other events throughout town. That's, that's the joy of having this, this item in town. People can reflect on this particular artifact and the fact that we can take it almost to them. So people can actually see up close the, the power of that event that day. This is a, this is a large I-beam piece of steel, thick piece of steel. And I don't know if you can see it on, on camera, but this particular artifact took some heavy heat damage and is twisted. And you can see some of the bolt, there's one particular bolt that is just bent over like a, like a regular hammered nail, just to give you the, the impact that the, that structure took. So with that, I present you the, the World Trade Center artifact for, from New York City.
Thank you, Chief. Motion to accept the artifact.
Second, second that.
Any discussion on the item? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you. We intend to, for the 10th anniversary, we should have this base put together and displayed. We'll be, we'll be announcing where this will be displayed for, for the anniversary. And Lieutenant Cook is in charge of the display? Well, he's working on the base. He's getting...
The base.
I know he'll do a good job. He has, he has some skills in welding and will be close to good use. He'll do a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move out of order under new business, which should be, well, the vote is new business, but it's technically selectmen discussion. We'll do, deal with that. And with that, we have Chief Sullivan, who did the presentation at the public hearing. Assuming that you're handing out what you...
These are drafts incorporating some of the recommendations from the public, as already stated.
Okay, and do you mind going through these?
I don't. I've incorporated some of the suggestions from Carlos Adams as far as wordsmithing, et cetera, on the ordinance.
And that's from the first public hearing?
Yes.
Right.
I'm sorry. What is not addressed in this is the dates. Okay, currently it's May, excuse me, June 15th. There was input as far as moving that date.
Right.
That is not in here. Also, there's nothing in here that addresses the parking on Upton Lane, Glenwood, or Big James. This regulates the resident-only parking in Glen Lake, so that other parking is not included in this.
And I don't think it could be. That would be under separate ordinance. That's a separate issue.
I believe so.
Because that would be...
That would have a greater impact on the residents, I believe.
Right, okay. Okay, any questions of the chief? Nick?
Chief, on section 10.
Yes.
One of the suggestions in the red line that we received, it was an ending sentence that said, "Vehicle shall only be parked in paved delineated parking spaces."
Correct.
In the proposed draft that we have here, is there anything that restricts an individual from, say a resident, from parking on the grass?
The title of that is, of number 10 is parking designated areas only.
So there will be...
I think that just restates...
So there will actually be signage that says this is...
There is signage now.
There's already signage there, parking.
Okay, so that would be redundant.
Correct.
Right, right. Okay. Any other questions?
Based upon the, the public comment tonight, if this board were to amend the, the no trespassing, currently the, the ordinance states between 10:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m. If that were changed to 10:00 p.m. to 10:00 a.m., do you see anything that would be problematic in terms of enforcement?
Absolutely. The idea is to keep the people out of there at night after, after dark. If it was going to be, I would say 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. or 10:00 p.m. That way, I still keep people out of there at night.
So don't change the hours of use, but just change the hours of parking?
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Right, the no trespassing would still exist from 10 till 5.
Absolutely.
But the resident-only parking would be from 9 to 10.
Right.
Or 10 to 10 or whatever the hours are.
That's a concern is after hour use. I've pulled drunk people off the shore and out of the water there, so. So from, from your standpoint, chief, if paragraph three and probably paragraph four, which state dates, if before the range of the dates, we could have a range of time that the ordinance applies, like from 9:00 a.m., I mean, that it, yeah, it applies from 9:00 a.m. to...
10:00 p.m.
10:00 p.m., the no trespassing time. Any problem from your enforcement perspective if there was a, a time in there? There's a concern that if a vehicle comes along at 8:45 and parks there, it parked at the right time.
Till 9:00. Or until 10:00.
But do we have to include into this ordinance, they have to be, non-residents have to be removed prior to 9:00 a.m.? Because if I park it at 8:45 when I'm legal to park it there? Yes. Okay, I, I understand your point. For an enforcement and a conviction wise, that's a concern.
Yeah, Nick?
Right, but I've seen areas that say no parking between these hours. So if it says no parking between 2:00 and 5:00 and I park there at 1:30, can I stay?
But that's, that's for all vehicles.
Okay.
Okay, so...
So if we made no...
No parking?
Non-resi, no parking for non-residents between 9:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m.?
Correct. As long as we delineate it in that fashion, yes.
Right.
But if it's just carried out, you know, parking up until, my concern is without that qualifier.
Okay.
Okay.
I know that. I've heard just two times come up, and it's 9:00 a.m., and I'm comfortable with 10:00 a.m. I've driven by there, and I don't think that's the issue. I think, I don't think it's these people who swim in the morning that's the problem. And I think I'd rather give those folks a little bit more wiggle room in terms of getting their swims in.
No, and just as long as the chief's point is, if they come by at 10:00 o'clock, at 10:01, they do patrol.
Correct.
Anybody that's there without a resident sticker...
Would be ticketed.
Would be ticketed.
I understand that. But I just, one of the amendments that I was going to suggest was a 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., not a 9:00 to 10:00, so.
10 to 10.
And the other issue that...
Is that seven days a week, or Monday through Friday?
I would do it seven days, seven days a week, for consistency purposes. And the other issue that came up in the first public hearing that was not addressed here was the issue of May 15th, and I believe it was to either September or October 15th. I'm trying to remember.
September 15th in the red line.
Right, September, okay. So those are the two, I guess, changes that I was looking for that I think would satisfy what we're trying to accomplish.
So you're looking to start it at May 15th?
May 15th through September 15th. And it would be during the hours of 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., where that's when the restriction would be in place.
Hey, economist Dave?
I support what Selectman Gross has just discussed, and I'm going to go one step I would like to indicate that the, some number of the spaces, let's, I'll just use the number 10 for right now, 10 of the 16 non-handicapped spaces be designated for residents only. The rationale for that type of a decision is to leave the handicapped spaces open for residents or non-residents. And it would leave, 10 out of 16, would leave six spaces for other visitors to our town. We've had email from residents indicating that out of the 16 regular spaces and two handicap spaces, and there's about 40 spaces across at Glen Lake School, we've had email that have said that we've noticed three or four cars with Gulfstown Transfer Station stickers. I would be, I would feel it would not be helpful if we went, if this ordinance came in place, and in late of the summer, we only see three cars there all day, or two cars. And therefore, why shouldn't we allow more non-residents to park there? Considering that we'll have the entire Glen Lake School for residents, should that ever happen? The other, so that would be something I'd like, when we come down to making motions on this ordinance, is to consider the number of spaces that would be restricted. Still allowing some visitors to this town. And I envision that happening, if there's 10 designated spaces, there could be 10 signs right next to those spaces. This space from 10:00 a.m. on is for residents only, verifiable by a transfer sticker. And I, over last weekend, the previous weekend, and this weekend, I've spoken to people on the waterfront. Are you a Gulfstown resident? Two of them said, yes. Do you have a sticker on your car from the transfer station? No, I've never been to the transfer station. But they would now. So up to now, we've been relying on the fact, how many cars have we observed with Gulfstown Transfer Station stickers? And I surmise that we'll, there's more cars there without the stickers than we would So as we get into discussion, I would like to have this board discuss pros and cons of not all 16 spaces.
Nick? I just have a question on the times. Because this is a week, seven-day-a-week ordinance, we're not going to have different days, I'm a little concerned that 10:00 o'clock may be a little later during the height of the summer on a Saturday or Sunday, where if 9:00 o'clock would work as a compromise, most people on the weekends like to get out early. So I think 9:00 o'clock would be more reasonable than a 10:00 o'clock.
Okay. So we have the hours, okay? We have...
Number of spaces.
The number of the, before we get into hours, we have the date.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Date of the ordinance, hours of ordinance, and number of spaces, okay? I'm going to ask the chief, do you have, or do you foresee any issues with enforcement as far as hours of operation?
As stated, 9 to 9, or 9 to 10, or 10 to 10, no.
Okay. Do you have any issues as far as enforcement with the date?
No.
Of the ordinance as written, or the date as proposed?
If we're moving it 15th, May, yes, man. Too many numbers running. Yes, from May 15th, that would be acceptable. I would rather see Memorial Day, but May 15th would work.
Would you prefer Memorial Day? Okay. Number of spaces. How do you see that as far as enforcement?
Makes the hair stand up on the back of my neck, to be quite honest. And the reason is, we need to give warning. We have to be able to delineate which spaces. Mere pieces of paper or something on the railings, they're going to be gone the first time someone comes along and says, here's one for me. We're going to have to ensure that every year, the parking spots are painted, resident-only or non-resident parking. What happens should I ticket a resident parked in a non-resident parking spot?
Non-resident would have no restrictions, just like they are today.
You mean a resident?
Correct.
A resident could park in a non-resident.
Your comment was a resident and a non-resident.
But a resident could park in a non-resident's...
Yes.
Okay.
It's just a normal space as it is today.
Okay. That's a concern, and that would be a question, that guy's got a resident sticker and he's parking my parking spot.
First come.
Yeah. You took my spot. Those are your spots.
Right.
Yeah, I just hope this doesn't wind up in a fistfight.
Another reason, Mr. Chair, for that type of a discussion is that if all the spaces at the Glen Lake School, and all 18 along Elm Street, were residential only, we are really forcing some Manchester and our other communities surrounding us, when they come to the waterfront, we're forcing them to find parking at other residential streets. And as I've listened to two of the people testify here with comments last week, some, a compromise towards that end is to allow some free parking without the restrictions along the 18 spaces.
I would agree to some extent, except on some of these hot weekends, there are 20, 30, 40 cars. So I think you're still going to have non-residents trying to find, you'll just have six less. But by having all non-resident spaces, at least you're allowing non-residents the access to the waterfront.
Doing this, this is my fifth year, and this topic has probably been the most, I've got a lot of people giving me input, and this is, I'd say it's probably four or five to one of residents who've said that they want this for residents only. And there have been people who have said, hey, I think it should be open to everybody. It's a public body of water, and it could be used for anyone. But the vast majority of Gulfstown residents that I've spoken to or have solicited me have stated that they want this to be parking for residents only. And I'm going to vote in that regard, based upon constituents and their, with the interest that they've expressed. But I also would like to see what happens over the next couple of years, as it is residents only. What will the condition of the waterfront be? Will we, how many tickets are we going to be giving? Will more residents partake in that resource? I think they will. I think it's going to take some time. And I think this is a, let's see what happens in a couple of years. What will the effect of this ordinance potentially be two or three years from now? And if in three years, there is no, people are still not using it, four of the time can revisit it, but I think you have to give it some time, you know, to see how it's going, how it's going to go. The other thing that is a little bit concerning, and this came up in, if I can just detour this a little bit, Mr. Adams stated in a couple of meetings ago that that waterfront was really not designed for an extremely high volume of people. So when we start talking about certain spots for non-residents and Gulfstown, I mean, I think ideally, we want residents to use that, but even Gulfstown residents, a finite amount, you know, you can't have hundreds of people on that waterfront. So I'm going to support this ordinance with some, you know, those time restrictions and dates, but I'm not amenable to having spots delineated. And I think, for the reasons the chief said, I think it's just too problematic. You're going to have people saying, hey, you're parked in my spot, I'm not a resident, that's not fair to me. I think it creates a little too much headache. And will we have spillover into other streets? We might. We may have to address that, just like we had problems a decade ago with around the high school, where we had to keep on going more and more streets, you know? But that's part of this process.
Nick?
I was just going to make a motion that we limit, according to the ordinance, resident-only parking from May 15th through Labor Day, between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m.
With the changes that the chief...
Well, I'm just addressing hours and dates.
Okay. Okay. Hours and dates.
If I may, before I, is there a way that we can maybe try to achieve consensus on some things and then talk about, I mean, I think that one of the things that we might have consensus over is the months. And then we can kind of tackle and really hash out hours.
Well, then, if you want...
Sure, I'll amend that to just May 15th or Labor Day.
Well, what I was going to suggest, why don't we start from the beginning? The chief passed out with some changes. Why don't we make a motion, have a motion on what he passed out? Start with that.
Well, if I may, Mr. Chair, I think there are three issues. And if we may have agreement, there's three things. One of them was the parking spaces, one of them was the months, and then the other one was the hours.
Right.
So once we kind of hash that out, then I think we'd be able to amend this to what we hashed those three things out, and we can just approve it from there.
Everything else, at least anything else in here looks fine.
Everything else is fine.
Oh, okay, well, because you said a consensus, so if everybody's comfortable with what the chief passed out, then that's a non-issue.
Right. Yes, I am.
I would accept this as a baseline.
Okay, that's fine. So next is going to be, let's go with the date. Of a date of effect.
I am, as I stated before, I was fine with the May 15th, and if it's through Labor Day, I'm fine with that, too. I mean, we're splitting hairs on two weeks, so...
The chief said he would prefer Memorial Day, but that's, that's up to the board. Don't forget, as you stated, this is something that we're putting in place, and it's going to be monitored.
The reason why I believe May 15th is better is because it's two weeks before Memorial Day typically, and there won't be any, really any confusion. So you might have some people coming in one week before, and this way, it's kind of known, it's, that would be...
I would support very specific dates, like the 15th of a month to the 15th. It's easier on your signage.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yes.
Okay.
So how, is it for the board, how about May 15th through September 15th? Is that fair? Easy. Middle of the month, both. That work? I'm fine with that.
Okay. And then we have hours of operation.
I'm okay with 9:00 or 10:00. I just thought that 10:00 would give a little bit more wiggle room to some of the comment that we had here tonight.
I would support the 9:00 o'clock. I feel waiting till 10:00, just on real hot summer days, we're going to see traffic already there. So from putting the restrictions in place at 9:00, I'd be happy with that.
Chief, do you have any issue with the 9:00 or 10:00?
No, either way.
Either way is fine with you? Okay.
I'm good.
So we're looking at 9:00?
9:00 p.m. to 10:00.
9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Yep. Would we make it to 9:00 p.m.? Again, just to keep it simple, 9...
9 to 9?
9 to 9. 9 to 9.
Okay.
Yeah, we picked out 10:00 because the no trespassing starts at 10:00.
Hmm, it's, what about the summer, when it's, like, doesn't get dark, and then people are pulling, I don't know.
I'd just as soon have it end when the no trespassing starts. Unless you want to do no trespassing from 9:00.
We could change that as well. That would be my suggestion. Because at 9:00 o'clock, things should be pretty well ceased down there.
Can somebody use the boat ramp at 9:15 at night to pull their boat in?
Could they, yes. I mean, as long as...
It's the parking which is...
Parking, if you're moving...
And this restriction is not addressing the hours across at the 7 trailer.
I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Right, we've run into boats pulling out, going in catfish or hornbill fishing...
Right.
At that hour, and they're allowed to come and go.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
All right, then that's fine. That's a trust. Okay? And the spaces?
Are we going to change that also on Paragraph 5?
Yeah.
Which one is that, chief?
No trespassing.
Yeah, it'd be 9:00 p.m.
Right.
I'm against the designated spaces, for the reasons the chief had mentioned and Selectman Campus I don't mention.
I think it's cleaner and it's easier if it's all one. And honestly, what I would have an issue with or concern is if you have a resident parking in a non-resident space, and you had three more or a couple of extra resident spaces, and a non-resident wants to know, why don't you park over there? And I can just see it happening because of the issues that we have.
Yeah. Thank you. I brought it up because I wanted to hear the rest of the discussion.
And I think it was good that you brought it up, but we're trying to make it simple, enforceable, and not have issues. And there's probably issues that will come up that we didn't expect, and we'll have to deal with that as it comes forward. So with that, and if somebody wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, I guess it would be adopt.
Adopt.
The ordinance as presented with the following changes.
The ordinance presented this evening?
Yes, the ordinance presented this evening by Chief Sullivan, with the three changes that we're just mentioning.
Date. Date.
The dates would be.
May 15th.
May 15th through, you want to state them?
September 15th.
Correct.
And the hours of restriction to be 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. for resident parking only.
Right. So it'll be only two.
And no trespassing hours.
And the no trespassing hours would be from 9:00 p.m. until 5:00 a.m.
Right.
Those are the three changes.
Okay, a second.
Seconded by Nick. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I have one? Uh, Chief Sullivan?
Oh, thank you.
You need to specify, I, I, the exact wordage on the signs, so that you know it's what you need to enforce. And I, I assume DPW will be fabricating the signs. You, you should be.
No, DPW doesn't fabricate the signs. The prison system fabricates it.
But they'll. They'll contract for the fabrication. But the, the actual words on the sign should be vetted.
They'll come from the police department.
Vetted in your office.
Correct.
Thank you.
Scott?
When will this take effect?
When the signs are up.
Okay. And we think, what, what is a ballpark?
Don't know.
I, I don't know.
They're, they're not the standard highway signs, so I.
They're in stock signs, so they may take several weeks.
Yeah, Nick?
Yeah.
In the interim, in those several weeks, can we get some announcements in the paper and on our website to let people know, and maybe a sign in the town clerk's office?
What we'll do is we'll put, we'll put several orange signs up on the kiosk there.
Right. Coming soon.
Yeah. No, it's here. And we'll be, also be issuing warnings.
Right.
For the next couple of weeks. So that way, it will get at least people familiar with it, and go that way as well.
Nick?
Is there a, I know the transfer station ticket, stickers are given out at the transfer station. Is there a method temporarily in the beginning, we can also give them out at the town clerk's office? It only requires residency, and most people can.
I can, I can check with Carl. I don't know, they probably go into his system there.
Yeah, they do.
But you could probably do it on the back end.
Right, in other words, once a week.
Are they sequentially numbered, though? I don't know, I have.
Yes.
You'd have to take a look at it, because it might be, there might be an issue, but if, if it's okay, because.
I believe they list vehicle information that goes with that sticker.
Yeah, they do.
Right, right.
It's just a suggestion to make it easy.
And there is a difference, because the sticker is put on the vehicle, there in front of the.
It's not transferable.
That's true.
Rather than giving it to them.
They have extended hours, so they're more accessible right now.
Yeah, they're open till 7:00 p.m. on Thursdays, so.
Thursdays, yes.
Yeah, I know.
I prefer to stay there.
And they don't close the gate until 7:00 o'clock.
All right, we're good, right?
And they're open on Saturday, where the town clerk is closed on Saturday. It's one of those hot summer days.
I've asked the station attendant at the waypoint, how does he verify residency? And it's from the car registration document.
Right.
Not driver's license, not a utility bill, but.
Right.
Car registration.
Right.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, now, trying to get back onto schedule. Chief?
We have, we have the two, the two residents that have a letter regarding the use of a temporary home.
Oh, okay, no, all right, that's fine. All right, we'll, we'll, we'll continue out of sequence then.
That would be Tab 6A.
Yep, we have. Wait a minute, it's not here. Oh, that's because it's under your.
My report.
Your report, and you didn't start your report yet.
No, I haven't.
That's why, okay. So we'll jump out of sequence. We'll go into the town administrator's report without getting into the town administrator's report, but we'll go to your request, and I'll leave, I'll turn that over to you.
Okay. In close to Tab 6A in your packets, you have a request from Bob LaFave of 46 Center Street, whose house burned down on April 26. He requested the Board of Selectmen declare an emergency housing situation for them under section 4.5 of the town zoning ordinance. This would allow them to buy and live in a 35-foot travel trailer on site until their new home is built, which is anticipated to be by October 1st, 2011. This is recommended by the planner and the building inspector.
Okay.
Motion is needed.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
One, I'm very sorry to hear about the fire, and wish you the best in the recovery.
Thank you. I will limit it to exactly a 35-foot, because we're in the market looking for one now.
No, that's all that was said to me, but if, I, do you want to put that restriction on it, or?
No.
No.
No. Approximate 35.
Approximate, yeah.
As long as it's not, as long as it's not 135-foot.
The pocketbook's not that big.
Okay, so modify that to just a.
Yes.
Travel trailer.
Yeah, just take the, take the length out.
Or RV, or fifth wheel, whatever you want.
Right, okay?
No, sounds good.
All in favor?
Equipped with smoke detectors and.
Sprinkler systems.
Well, just, like, I, I don't know if I could ask the chief, how is, are there any concerns?
Well, the modern, the modern RVs do come with carbon dioxide and smoke detectors, so be sure when you're shopping around them, to be careful there.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
You're welcome.
Why we not go home to home? Thank you. A good night.
Night.
I'm glad you were out with him that night.
Yeah, I was sick for three weeks, and he asked me to go with him, and I said, you really want me to go?
Yeah.
He said, yeah, I'm really tired, I really need you, and I said, oh, all right. Now I go, okay.
Okay, you're welcome. Good luck. Okay, we're back to out of the town administrator's report, and back to the fire chief.
We're flexible, nothing else, right?
Right. We'll get there.
Okay, the next, the next thing I had was.
The MOU.
Memorandum of Understanding Between the Town of Gostown and the Gostown Truck Center. Actually, this is drafted up by the Greater Manchester Public Health Region, which helps us coordinate and plan for events where it's a public health emergency, whether it be for vaccines or for preventive medication dispensing. We currently have a plan drafted with, with the Greater Manchester Public Health Region to treat regionally if the, in the event there was a health emergency, whether it be anything as bad as an anthrax attack, or be a case where we had to give out flu shots like we have in the H1N1. So part of that planning process was to invite all the partners that would be involved in our plan, and in part, and one of those partners is the Gostown Truck Center. Because what happens is we, in, in a mass vaccination or, or mass medication dispensing situation, we would ask to bus in folks from, say, Prenardville, so for, so relieve some of the parking, parking abilities at the, at the high school or the other, other sites. Also, we, we look to, we, we also, part of our plan, it's a regional plan, we include the town of New Boston. And we would have the folks from New Boston park at their school, and we would bus them in, so they wouldn't all collect here at, at our site. So with that, with the, the feds that monitor these plans have said that we, we need to maintain an MOU with our transportation agency, and this, in our case, is Gostown Truck Center. So this outlines, this is two-page MOU, outlines the relationship between us and the, and the Truck Center, and involving the, recognizing the, the, we call the MACE, the Region's Multi-Agency Courting Entity, which is the Manchester Public Health. And without, without, without a doubt, the Gostown Truck Center said they would do this with or without an MOU, but just, just for planning purposes, the feds would like to see this.
And this was emailed to you today as it came in today.
Yeah, no, I know, I've seen it. Any questions on this?
Make a motion that we accept the memorandum of understanding between the Town of Gostown and the Gostown Truck Center, and authorize the chairman to sign.
Is there a second?
What seconded?
Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Great, thank you very much.
Hey, you have one other?
Just on the new pumper tanker? The, the purpose of the, of the next item is to request the award of a bid for new pumper tanker. Back in March, the, there was a warrant article for funding of a new pumper tanker, which included taking some funds from, from our capital reserve fund that we have for, for fire apparatus, and from, from, some funds from taxation. Once we get to award, actually before that, in the planning process, we would look to see what kind of truck that, that we would need. In this particular case, we were combining two retired, we're retiring two apparatus, the old tanker and the old engine five, into, into one apparatus. The reasoning for that is, is to also, we're, we're combining our fleet to simplify our fleet, and have them more versatile for, for just more than one function. That's similar to what we did with the, the new ladder, the new tower ladder. We took the aspects of the old ladder six and the old ladder one, we combined it into a, to a new tower ladder. We're kind of doing that same thing here with a pumper tanker. So this is a comprehensive truck where it's, it has a function as a pumper and is, and is a function as a tanker. So it's going to be a very large vehicle, and it's a custom and specialized vehicle. So we, once again, put our, put our heads together, we got the folks involved internally in our department, we call the, the new apparatus committee, or they call the truck committee, to define what kind, what kind of truck we want, what kind of truck we need, and what components of that truck we, we should have in, in this particular apparatus. So with that said, we put this, we put the specification together, and once, once the vote came out in April, we developed the, we called the RFP, and the specification for this, for this truck, and we got your blessing to go out to bid. Now, when we went out to bid, we publicized it, you know, using the, our typical methods, we have the website, we put it in the union leader and so forth and so on. I know there was some interest, and we directed all of our vendors to go onto the town's website to pull down the specification. Part of the process, we also included, we call a vendor meeting, a mandatory vendor meeting, because, because this truck is a particularly spec, a specific customized truck, there were certain components that we really wished to have, there is quality, quality components that we really want to have on this, this particular truck, because in Gostown, you know, we, we need a truck that's going to last 15 to 20 years, it's going to be durable, and it's going to be able to handle the demands that we put on it on a day-to-day basis, and just going over a road system. So one of the demands also was having it fit in our, fit in our stations. So we have a size, size demand, and also we have an operational demand. For example, when we talk about roundabouts in some of our narrow, narrower roads, we want to make sure we can get in and get out without having the apparatus be, be hindrance. So with that said, we, we had a vendor meeting, and two interested vendors did show up, Selfin and Pierce. They, they had some great questions, and they went over the spec page by page, and we spent quite a bit of time with them. Also, we had the opportunity where they could actually take a look at the, the older apparatus to give us a trade-in value with their bid. The bids were, were due on May 12th, and at that time, just before that, one of the, one of the vendors did, did give us a, noted writing, said they, they appreciated our, our time and efforts, but they were unable to provide a bid for, for an unknown type of reason. We did receive one, one bid, and that was by Pierce through their vendor down in Massachusetts, in Walpole, Massachusetts. It's a Minuteman. It is the same vendor that provided us the tower ladder, and it's the same vendor that's providing us our new ambulance through MedTech. This vendor submitted a, a, a comprehensive response. We had a few questions, we went back and forth on clarification of, of their price and, and components, and with, with that, they did come up with a vehicle that had a custom cab configuration, very similar to our Tower 1. It includes all the increased safety features that are, that are on the Tower 1, things like, actually, the seating features, and also includes airbags, similar to what you see on, on your typical car these days, which is pretty significant for a fire apparatus. It also includes a 1,500 gallon per minute pump, fire pump, it has, it will hold a minimum of 2,000 gallons of water. It'll also include a foam system that we, it seems like we're using more and more foam on some of our complex fires that we have these days, even house fires. For example, the previous folks that, that came in tonight from Center Street, we use a considerable amount of foam on that fire, because a lot of combustibles in homes nowadays are actually synthetic, so we need to use foam on certain, certain types of fires. This particular truck, because, because of it holds a significant amount of water, will need a pretty decent engine to run it. It'll have a 450-horse engine. It also will have a, we call a port-a-tank. Port-a-tank is, when we get out to rural areas that do not have hydrants, we'll set up a port-a-tank system, where we'll actually set up this, looks like a big portable swimming pool next to the fire, and as tankers come up, other tankers, mutual aid, they'll come up and drive up, drop their water, and then go find more water and come back. And we use that as a portable pond, per se, to give us a, a water source. This truck will have dump, tank dumping capabilities, just like a regular tanker. So for example, if we use it in that, that aspect as a tanker, we can show up, dump, dump the 2,000 gallons fairly quickly, and then they move on and find a water source and refill. What's, what's nice about this particular truck, it has a, a shortened turning radius, it has a shortened wheel ba, wheelbase, and, and overall, it's a lowered overall height, again, to fit in the stations, and to reduce width to fit in some of the tight spots and such tight streets. It has increased storage compartments with roll-up doors, similar to what we see on the tower ladder, and also has a various number of warranties that go along with it, and actually, it's superior warranties when it comes to the pump, the fire pump itself. Typically, some of the vendors have, have shown that their warranties for a fire pump is typically maximum five years. In this particular case, they're offering a six-year warranty on their fire pump, which can be very significant nowadays, because the fire pumps, the fire pumps are becoming more and more complex with valves and electronics. So it's something that we really looked at highly with that. With that said, I'd like to progress further in regards to disclosing the bid price on this particular vehicle and recommend a word.
Before you go forward, I have a couple of questions. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah.
On the water pump. Water pumps have always been issues down the road with our apparatus. How, how are we dealing with that as far as this water pump? And 10 years from now, will we still be, hopefully, we'll still be able to get parts for it?
Well, that's actually a good point that you bring up. One of the big, big issues that we were having with the pumps, for example, with our engine six, it's the E1, it's 2006 E1, and we're having electronic issues with that. Again, and that's not covered under warranty, because the warranty's already lapsed on that. So we, we're going to have to eat the cost of repair on that particular, particular issue. Where in this particular case, being a six-year warranty, that, that would be covered, if that happened on this truck. Secondly, the way this truck is configured, because of the reduced wheelbase, what they've done is they've moved the pump forward. So if you've ever driven by our station, our guys will be checking the motor and all the, the belts and, and filters on it, it, they tilt the cab up.
Right.
And to expose that, the motor in it. On this particular truck, when you tilt the cab up, not only does it expose the, the engine on it, but it also exposes the pump.
So the pump's not on the back like the other ones?
Right. So, so actually, for serviceability, you actually can stand on top of this pump and service it from the air, versus the trucks that we currently have, a lot of times you have to take the pump panel apart just to get to that pump. And just the, the labor hours, just to get, just to get to the, to the pump to fix it And just the labor hours, just to get to the pump to fix it can be very, very expensive. So we're hoping that it reduces downtime if you do have to service the pump. And then secondly, it reduces cost of that labor cost to repair it down the road.
Okay, but I guess more specifically, my question should be towards the maker of the pump, is this a, like, we had issues with the Godiva pump, with the Godiva pump couldn't get parts anymore. Is this, are these more parts, pumps that are more prevalent, more common, that hopefully parts would still be available?
In this particular case, the cast parts for this pump are by Darley and by Pierce. Okay. So they're, and the valves are, we call Akron valves, which are common within the industry.
Okay.
And that was important for us because, again, for that same reason, we had a Godiva pump and this pump company actually was out of England. And they still are. They still make pumps out there, but they make more like portable pumps right now.
Right.
And industrial pumps. They don't make fire pumps anymore. So, you're right, we looked at that when the spec came through, we said, all right, where do these parts come from?
Okay, good. And just one thought on the narrower width. You said the vehicle is, the width of the vehicle is narrower. Does that give us any issues as far as maneuverability with a full tank of water?
In this particular case, as far as maneuverability with a tank onboard, it's
When it's full of water.
It's a full of water, so you figure it's eight pounds per gallon of water.
Right.
You've got 2,000 gallons onboard, on a full tank. So this truck is possibly, with all the equipment on it and the weight of the vehicle, this truck could weigh 40,000 pounds. So it's a heavy truck. So that's why it's on a tandem axle. It's got tandem axles like the 10-wheel dump trucks you see. And it also has significant braking system, also enhanced braking system on the front with a turning radius. So for example, as we're responding and we're going into, say, a roundabout, we're able to, you know, that was a really important item, is giving us a turning radius report for this particular apparatus. And this had a real tight turning radius so we can navigate through something like a roundabout.
No, no, I understand. And the reason why I'm asking the question, because when you make the vehicle narrower with that, you have, exactly, because you have a tank that's holding eight gallons, eight pounds per gallon of water. Now with the narrower width, making the maneuver, it can tip.
Right, and we call it T-tank. So the tanks, the tank is structured by-
They're not round.
It's not round. It's called a T-tank and it's got baffles in it. And you remember, we've got to make it fit in our station, so we can only have it as high as about 10 foot two. So it's not a very tall truck in the sense of some of the trucks that can be out there. And the truck is 30 feet, 35 feet long. So having the T configuration of that tank, it puts the weight in the center of the vehicle by the frame rails and just over the wheels. So it's a balanced vehicle. Of course, like anything else, you know, that's why we stress to our drivers, speed is not always the answer when responding, it's making sure you control the vehicle.
Okay. Nick, you got a question?
Yeah, well, we, I remember the motion for going out to RFP were to look at PTO generator, gold leaf versus vinyl lettering and the federal queue siren, they were going to be optioned out and priced separately. Where are we with those?
Actually, is the vinyl siding, the vinyl is actually gold leaf, but on vinyl. It's not the other where it's applied as leaf.
Right, what they call is they, they had a question about that too. I said, well, what's your, what's our option? And they said, well, we still apply it on like a vinyl sheet and that we put it on because it's a cleaner look and although they'll do it by hand, you know, they don't recommend it. So the other option would be to use the, what they call the faux gold leaf look. And we have some on, I think it's on our squad one, where we just use that faux look. You could tell the difference. And they said the price difference on that is $307 between the faux and the real gold leaf on that vinyl sheet. I recommend that we stay with the genuine stuff. It weathers better and-
In the long run, you'd be better off. It won't, you won't lose the car rating.
Right. The other question was the hydraulic generator. Initially, we had specified as a option, to option that hydraulic generator separately to see what that price would be. The price on a hydraulic generator was a six KBW hydraulic-driven generator and that price came at $16,500. We thought that was, the price for that was way higher than we really thought we could get the benefit from having a hydraulic generator on there or any generator at all. And in fact, we said, okay, after we got it back in, we called them and said, well, how much for a Honda generator? And they came back with a price for a Honda generator of $8,000, of a similar, similar size. And I said, well, we'll get that later if we had to. And we just said, we're going to opt out of the generator, any wiring components, cord reels or anything. That's something that we could do possibly later if it was really needed at that point. We felt that the pricing, the pricing just didn't match up with the need at that point. And then lastly, the federal queue siren, the price for that came up to $3,400 and that's something that I'd like to keep in just because of the traffic issues and the size of this truck, they get to hear it's coming. It does come with a 100 watt siren, but that's similar to like a police car. Versus the federal queue siren, I don't know if you've heard it or not while you're out there, you know, you know it's coming, you hear it, especially in some of the newer cars if you have your radio on or there's any other distractions of the vehicle, you'll hear it coming.
Or your air conditioning and the radio.
Your air conditioning, your radio, kids in the backseat, all that good stuff.
Nick?
Just one last question. Chief, as it's configured currently with the options that you just recommended, is it within the budgeted amount?
It is within the budgeted amount. One of the things that was unique with this particular vendor, which was Pierce, is they offer a 100% prepay, prepay discount. And with that discount, it takes us, puts below the, below budgeted amount. To give you a description of what the 100% prepay means is say if tonight, we go ahead with a ward, tomorrow I give them a call and say, okay, we're giving you a notice of award for this particular project. And at that point, what happens is Pierce then develops a contract for us to sign. And then secondly, they get what we call the performance bond. And in the built-in, in this project is 100% performance bond. So for any reason, this particular vendor cannot finish the project, it's, the project is insured for the amount and for the outcome for this project. So we're protected there. So with that, it equates to about $22,000 in discount when opting with this 100% prepay. Now, once we get the, once we get the contract back to sign with the performance bond certificate, the purchase order is obviously presented to finance and we can sign the contract. Once the contract is signed and submitted back to them, we have 10 days to cut them a check. And with the timing of that, looking at the holiday, we're looking at, even if we went to award, say tomorrow, we're probably looking at the first or second week in July before payment is actually probably due, just to give you an idea how that would work. And with that, they're saying that from, from the date of award, say if notification award, they're saying that they can build this truck in 150, 150 working days.
Final question.
Just a follow-up. So does it come in under budget with the discount or is it under budget or within budget and then even more within budget?
It comes, it comes in, under budget with the discount and trade-in. Just, I want to let you know also, they offered a $3,800 trade-in for both vehicles, for both tanker five and engine five.
Okay, but, so if we don't take that early payment, that initial payment, it doesn't come in under budget?
It does not come in the budget.
Mm-hmm.
My only concern, because I like everything that you've, my only concern is that payment is usually the one lever you have when something isn't done correctly. And I know we have a performance bond for that, but typically, performance bonds, in order to call in a bond, there has to be a serious breach and you, you run into an issue, oh, is it worth the legal costs of calling in a bond versus the few things that need to be done? Sometimes I think you lose leverage when it's paid upfront and the only thing you're relying on is a bond versus that final payment that you refuse to make until they fix everything on your punch list.
You would, if, for example, when you look at the contract, obviously you have, you accept the vehicle when it's complete and it's up to us to accept the vehicle or not, whether it's complete under the specifications addressed or not. No, if it was, if it was a vendor that, that was trying to cut their teeth in the industry, I'd be concerned. This particular vendor is the largest fire apparatus vendor in the world and has over 50% of the market of building fire apparatus. So although your concerns would be valid, but in this particular case, they're not so valid, yeah, in my, in my mind, because of this, the track record of this particular company.
How about a 90% prepay, just same amount, 22,000?
Yeah, I have to-
We have 10% retainage.
I am not comfortable prepaying something, no matter how great the company is, no matter how long the company's been around, especially in today's economy. Because you could prepay, they could go chapter 11.
Then you have your performance bond.
We have the performance bond for that.
Yeah, you get protection.
I'm just saying, there are a lot of other issues though that could come up and I'm not comfortable with the prepayment like that.
What's a normal payment if you, if you didn't go with prepay? What do they normally require when you place an order?
Well, particularly, like, for example, with the tower ladder, we, we arranged at that point, we could, I believe it was up to 20%, but that's what FEMA would allow as far as the grant goes. That's what, that's the maximum you would allow. And in this particular case, it's not unusual. Like I said, with this particular vendor, I feel more comfortable extending, extending that out because I know they would, they would come up with a product that we're happy with, just because of our experience with the tower ladder. Is whenever we've had any issues with that particular truck, they've responded quickly and they've dealt with it and we've been quite happy with it.
The tower truck was a 20% deposit in their balance upon delivery?
Balance upon delivery and they gave us, they gave us a number of options. One of them was, you know, your payment would be total at the end, that's one particular option. Another option would be you could remit, once the frame or chassis is complete, a certain amount and then there's a progress payment within 90 days of finishing, finishing the truck. So, but the, the benefit of that, you don't really, I mean, you're only looking at like a $9,000 discount when you do something like that, so-
Would that get you within budget?
I'm with the chief on this one in the sense that we, we went through this company for the tower truck and they promised, they delivered on all their promises and we've been very pleased with them. It's, you know, $22,000 is $22,000 and there's a performance bond, so I understand the whole leverage piece, but if there's an issue, the performance bond will cover us in that respect. So we're, you know, I'm reading from the lines here, it seems like we're getting like a 5% discount if we prepay, simply because that's the cost of probably them financing it themselves. You know, barring, you know, again, you know, you can reach out to other chiefs, you know, in terms of their financial, if there's any known financial issues, but if this was, if this was a vendor that we never dealt with before, that we just bought a truck, those are, I mean, we just, we've just had this thing not even a year and we've been pretty pleased with it and the quality of the workmanship from what I'm, from what I've heard was excellent. And in light of the economic conditions, $22,000, that's a, with a performance bond, I don't see that as even much of a gamble. Yes, you might lose a tad bit of leverage, but I'd rather have 20 something thousand dollars in our pockets.
You wouldn't make that an interest on that money anyway.
Yeah. With that said, I can, if you'd like, I can present recommended numbers. If you were to proceed.
I do.
I do too. I have to proceed.
What do you mean by recommended numbers? Once, I can disclose the-
At least disclose the bid.
The bid numbers.
The other-
Nick?
I'm hesitant, only because I've heard the whole argument about bonds and we can call the bond and, I think we just went through this in a public works project, that we found out that bonds are not-
So easy.
What they're cracked up with. But I will go with the chief's recommendation if he feels comfortable and-
You can ask this particular vendor with the tower ladder spec, he's like, boy, I can't believe you go over every word and period and-
But I will say, we had 80% of the money riding before we, unless we accepted it, he didn't get the money.
Right.
We're now-
And that, that's-
They're paid, so whether we accept it or not.
What's the motivation to finish it?
And that speaks volume two also, is the reason why we have two visits out to the factory. The first, first visit is, is called pre-construction. And what we do there is we go with the plans and the engineers and go inch by inch over this truck and exactly what's going to be on this truck and what's not going to be on this truck and what's supposed to be on this truck. And then they start to build. And then at some point in time, they say, well, we're getting close to the end of this build, you've got to come out again. And what they do there is they show us the truck and we take the spec page by page, by section by section and say, you know, we're missing something here. And it's us to identify that. And we can say, you know, at that point in time, you know, once we know everything is going to be done, then we sign off on it and then it can take its trip east from the factory. So they won't even release it from the factory without a signature from, from a representative from a Gostown Fire Department. And so it, you know, what happens is the truck is released from the factory to the vendor. The vendor's the one that has to close the deal. And if they can't close the deal, then that's a problem.
Chief, is there a penalty for not having it done within 150 working days in the contract?
There was, the specification we put together was 250 days.
250 days, okay.
So they're, they're-
But they think they can get it done.
They could do it in 150 days.
Okay.
Scott?
Well, I think Sue's suggestion may bear some merit in the sense that would they be willing to have the same terms with 80 or 90%? I mean, it's still a vast majority of the money in terms of them saving money on, say, financing costs, but by the same token, it would provide us with a decent amount of leverage if something were to go awry. And I would love to, I'd love to hear their response to that. It's a good idea. It still gives them the bulk of the money.
I think we may lose our discount leverage, but again, it'd be for, for what it's worth. I mean-
Tell them that we're ready to sign, but 90% prepay, same as $22,000 discount, see if they buy.
Nick?
If I may, sometimes the fact that it's over budget, they're not getting the contract.
Right, and we're where the budget, as all the other vendors were, once, once that warrant article passed, it was public knowledge.
So that, by itself, may be leverage that, you know, these are the board's concerns and if it doesn't come in at this price, at least this price, we're not awarding the-
Before you go any further, I think knowing the numbers and how, how the numbers are might help you with that decision or not, I'm not sure. Because the budget, it's under budget, but not significantly in the budget, put it that way. So getting them to call for a 90% prepay, I'm not sure if we're going to be able to stay within budget.
What you're saying is you need all $22,000 discount.
I need-
Well, you're already kind of-
Yeah.
Reading from the lines here, I can, I can tell you what your numbers are. I mean, so I think we need to cut bait here. Are we going to accept this bid or are we not? Are we going to accept this bid, or, or are we not?
I'm ready.
Nick?
You're going to accept the bid as long as it's under budget and you can have some retainage, is that basically the message?
Well, I guess the, the other area, you just, Sue made a, a statement that the interest on that money isn't even 22,000, so that's the company's profit, if you will. There's no financial hardship to them to give us a $22,000 discount with normal payment terms. I mean, they're not making any, it's not like they're going to save anything because we're paying upfront, they're just getting it upfront.
Right.
They're not going to put, if they put it in the bank, they're not going to make that interest, so, I mean, for us to say, you know what, we, we like it, we don't want to pay upfront, but it needs to come in under budget.
Within budget. Correct. This is an avenue for us to get a high-quality truck for something that would cost more than what we anticipated in, in the budget, but it's going to be within budget or a little bit below.
Chief, would you like to not disclose the number tonight, and go back and ask them if they would accept 90% prepay and keep the 22,000?
I-
Because you have to stay under budget.
I think it's, you're talking, in the scheme of this project, that's 500, up to $550,000, you're talking, what, $5,000? Not even 1%? Is it worth going back to the, back to them on this, versus, I don't follow that. I'm, I'm saying-
It is, if it is, if it gives the board reassurance that they're not going to lay out $550,000 and not have any quote-unquote leverage if, if there's a problem.
Right.
Or if their promise was 150 days, and now we're looking at 240 days, you know?
And part of the 500 and somewhat thousand dollars that they're proposing, that it includes money to purchase a performance bond, so-
Right, and I think sometimes when you simplify, I mean, I, again, I, I'm with you on this, but I'm just trying to play the devil's advocate. Let's just take away this $550,000 truck, and we're talking about a $20,000 Toyota Camry or something, and if someone said, okay, if you pay, you know, you pay for all upfront, most people wouldn't do that, they'd say, hey, when I, when it's done, I'll pay for it, you know, and even if they, someone gave them a, a discount, they'd be like, they'd be a little bit hesitant to pay the whole thing upfront.
Right.
That, that's all. I would think that the other side, this Pierce Corporation, would, would understand that there would be some, you know, anxiety over that, but can't hurt to ask them.
I mean, we're dealing with taxpayer dollars. You know, I wouldn't even do that with my own money.
And the thing, too, is that I think this board would need to see that performance bond before, the language in that performance bond, before we committed-
Oh, sure. I mean, that comes with the contract.
Right.
And, and you'll have that.
Right. Or Drescher would need to see, especially would need to see that performance bond language.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody agree with that?
No, as Nick said before, it's great, you know, oh yeah, we have a performance bond, but what's in that, what's the language in that bond? I mean, it could be so-
Right, and I'm, I'll be honest with you, I'm not concerned, I mean, they're going to build a truck.
Yeah.
But through experience, I know, we, we've ordered enough trucks where it's never 100% correct when it's done. There's always things that need to be fixed, or need to be adjusted, or need to be changed. And if you don't have that final payment as leverage-
Right.
What force, because unless it's gross negligence, or, I mean, it's always going to be a he said, we said, and then if, if we have to bring it legal action, we're going to sit here and say, okay, it's going to cost us this, it's going to cost us this-
We don't have a truck, meanwhile.
Is it, is it worth $30,000 in legal expenses for a $5,000 fix?
Well, a couple, couple things. First of all, you know, that we have documentation that they're insured up to $200 million, which is great, but, but most importantly is, is that we, I, I, when I go to a, to bid for a piece of apparatus, or something as complex as, as this, is, I just don't put out a sheet, a bid sheet saying, I want, you know, we're going to bid to it for a fire truck, and then give me what you got, okay? That's the reason why I put, put the truck committee together, and we spend hours and hours, you know, line by line, going, okay, from bumper to bumper, you know, what do we want, you know, for equipment, lighting, the pump, valves, electronics, seating, even color seat belts? We specify that out, so we're, we're extremely specific in the regards to what we want, and how they, how that, we need them to price it. And that's why the, the RFP that we went out was 89 pages, because that's exactly what we did. And now when we get a specification back from the vendor, we go line by line, matching up with our, with our specification, making sure that what we want is, is, is in here. And when it's not, we, we call them with questions. And in fact, I've got two pages of questions, going, okay, may have, I might have missed it, but where in your spec is the red seat belts? And then they'll go back and tell us where it is, or maybe they said, well, we, we forgot them, no, here's documentation that you're going to get red seat belts. So again, it's that due diligence on our part that prevents a scenario like, like Select McConney Posano says, is, you know, where you go back and say, well, it's a he said, she said. No, when we, when we sign on the dotted line, it's very explicit of what this truck's going to be.
With all due respect, chief, I mean, our, our experience with our recent road construction, the RFP and the specs were this thick, too, and we still have the same problem.
Yeah.
I'm just, I mean-
If that was the case, what's the final acceptance for?
The final acceptance is, is-
Make sure they built.
We sign off on that truck.
But to make sure, you go through the truck, and you make sure what they said they were going to build is what's actually built.
Right.
But if we've already paid, whether we accept it or not, it's our truck.
We've bought a truck under the, under the contracted terms that, that's presented, which included all the components that has been specified. And if, say, we specified for a hose bed, and that hose bed is not there, then we have a case against them to provide us a hose bed. So, you know, they just can't sit there and, sit there and go, okay, in, in 150 days from now, they're, they're going to wheel up with just a frame rail with six, six or seven wheels on it, you know, but they can't do that. With this particular company, I know they wouldn't, but I, I, I hear what you're saying in regards to leverage, but I'm not sure if it's-
I just don't, well, I guess if I could, I don't get 20%, we paid them before, then we paid them 80% delivery, even if you held back-
Chief, uh, there's a, must be an expiration date on their bid, and is that expiration date in jeopardy if we delay this seven days?
I don't believe so. I don't believe so.
Yeah, you just answered the question.
I think we're 60 days out, but-
Does no harm to ask the question if they would accept 90 or 95% payment upfront.
If I could get guidance on what you would want to see, 95 or 95, I mean, 90 or 95, that'd be great.
90. The more, the better. I mean, I, I, as I said before, we, in the last, on the, on the tower truck, granted, it was all, was it grant money, but it was 20% down, 80% upon completion, even if you flip-flop that, 80, 20, or 90, 10, I, I'm still thinking that it still gives you a sizable amount, $55,000-
90.
Of, of money with help.
Just enough to cover things that aren't huge. I mean, it's going to come in with hose beds and pumps and all that other stuff, but it's those minor things that you want to have some leverage to make sure that they fix it in a timely fashion, and then before you accept it.
That 10%, that 10% is their profit, they don't need that upfront.
My, my big press on any type of apparatus that we received is, if it's in the contract and the spec, that it's on that truck before we sign off on it, period, whether we, we've paid ahead of time or not. And it, because I know, once, once we sign off on it, we own it. And, you know, so, so I say, okay, as soon as we sign off, then the warranty things kick in.
Right, but it's very altogether possible that you, they will call you up, I mean, in this world, and they'll say, you know what, I know the spec calls for this, and ordinarily, our supplier fulfilled that spec, but, you know, with the whole Japanese problem, we can't now provide that part, because the part was made in Japan, or whatever, but we can do this, it's lesser of a spec, but I have no other place to get it. And that's the stuff that happens.
What's good about this particular vendor is, everything is fabricated in Wisconsin.
Okay.
Period. And that's what's, and that's-
I-
Made in USA, and that's-
Chief, I agree with everything you're saying with the vendor. I've worked for a federal agency that had bought trucks from the same firm. However, it, we're not losing anything by waiting seven days.
I understand. So whether it be 90 or 95, I-
It's no relation, right, Dave?
To the company, Pierce?
No.
You sure?
Yeah.
Would I be here in New Hampshire?
This is true. I don't know.
I'd be in some island.
Since you've been here, this is the second truck we're getting from them.
Probably different spelling, right?
No, it's not.
Nick?
Could we just clarify one thing for the chief, that there's not an issue, that there was just the one vendor? You know, short of-
It is what it is, yeah.
It is.
Short of ironing out the, the cost issue, we're okay with that.
Right, and that may give us better leverage when we're talking, when we're talking to that vendor, saying that the, the board would, doesn't have reservation right now with this particular vendor, it's just, they want a 90 or 95 prepay option.
Why don't you give them a number? Is it 90% or 95%?
90.
90, I'd like, I mean, if we could, yeah.
Make that as an offer and see what they come back with.
Okay. Great. Okay, awesome, we'll be here next week.
Very good. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Motion, take a break.
You don't need a motion for that, you can just take a-
Motion to recess.
Motion to take a recess.
Oh, you can.
Second.
Break, and we'll go into the town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This week, your meeting schedule is Wednesday night, Budget Committee, Thursday night, Planning Board. Consensus folder tonight includes the AP warrants, a revised first half property tax warrant, the interest language was changed per DRA's recommendation, the betterment assessment warrants for Linchell-Danis Park, the first was the total assessment, the second was the first billing, employee status reports for Parks and Rec seasonal hire and two new firefighters, event permits for a summer grilling event on June 18th at Hannaford, the annual Sky Watch for the public library on July 27th, ice cream party with musical performance, this is a public library kickoff, a summer reading on July 29th, and thank you letter to the Rotary for their donation. Oh, and the Atlas Fireworks contract that arrived today and was placed in your packet, in your signature.
Has, have you seen the contract?
Yeah, and more importantly, Bill Connor and Chief O'Brien have reviewed it.
Okay.
Yeah. What happened was, originally, they put Bill Connor's name on it, and his, and I think his, at his home address or something.
Oh, really?
So that had to get, yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion?
And the committee voted to accept it, to the 250th committee.
Okay, do we have a motion?
No.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
I'm giving the second to Dave.
I have a question, if I may, I know-
On what? Consensus folder?
Yeah. Do you want, like, stuff that gets approved by the 250th committee, do you want that to appear in the consensus folder, or how does that work?
Well, if, if it's something that requires board action, yeah.
Let's just say it's a payment, like, we're renting tables and chairs for $500 or something like that, that you wouldn't ordinarily, but any sign-
Right, or anything, our purch, we have a purchasing policy, and a certain level for admin, we're in level two, so if it's over that amount, which, I'd have to look it up, I think it's, I think it's probably $5,000, would require a board of selectmen action.
I think it's five.
But anything under that, we'll just process as payments.
Okay.
And when you're done your fundraising, we will get the list and put it on the agenda to accept all those donations.
Okay.
Okay. You have a request, a request from Linda Lancome, 25 incline, she is requesting the same authorization granted by the Board of Selectmen on 10/25/10 to authorize her to maintain Ora Street with the same conditions as the previous authorization.
Okay, I have a question on that. Was that only a, a one-time event, or a specific time?
There was no time limit on the letter.
We, we had the expiration set to the term of the last board, the end of March.
Does that have something to do with the, uh, col, uh-
It was main-
Water?
Yes, it was, uh, the homeowner's application wants to be able to maintain drainage-
Right.
Off of the road, to the left and right of the road. The authority to do that, as well as-
Okay, the only question-
Light maintenance of filling potholes.
Okay, but the question that I have is, what is the extent that they can do this maintenance? I mean, can they go in there with excavator and-
They can.
They can't widen the road, it won't-
They can't widen, but they can level-
They can't change the surface.
Okay, but is anything that they're doing have to be okayed by Public Works?
It's a gravel road, they're leveling it, and as I would say, no. They're filling-
There are all kinds of conditions in the letter, if you look at the previous letter at 6B.
In fact, you know, they're-
Oh, was, I'm sorry, it was only valid till March 8th, 2011.
Yes. I would like, I would like this authority extended just for the length of this board, and, and then I believe the issue should be quiet after that.
Could, as a suggestion-
Go ahead, Nick.
Could we not put an expiration date? Require a, an annual inspect, not an inspection, if you will, but DPW at some point each year views it, and we reserve the right to rescind that permission?
Then the onus becomes on us, as opposed to the onus on them.
Same conditions, though, just minor repairs to the road, you know, keep everything else, the width of travel cannot be widened.
I, I would prefer not to have it open ended like that.
I would, I would prefer it be extended for one year, and I believe the, the issue with maintenance, that road would be quiet after that, because there were issues with, in a butter, going against drainage flowing to the left and right of the road. So along that line, I would make a motion, my, I want to make a motion to extend the same authority that we, to Lancome, 25 incline, E, that we did last year. Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
With the expiration of March.
Whatever the election is.
One year.
Yeah.
2012.
Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Thank you. You have a request from Cemetery Trustees, in response to their meeting with the Board of Selectmen, they're requesting that the cemetery seasonal hall be extended from 14 weeks to 26 weeks through the month of October. If the board is inclined to authorize this, then the DPW director should be notified to include 26 weeks in his 2012 budget request.
Nick, I have a couple of questions. First, could we clarify if we would need additional, because I remember at one of the meetings, we had, the DPW director said something that he could provide seasonal people additional time to cemetery if they needed it, from his current staff, seasonal people. So if we could just clarify that, because maybe it would, it could just be a matter of reassigning. And my second question, kind of goes more towards the housekeeping and financial side. You know, we have, our facilities person, if you will, is shared among different departments with a portion that they utilize him. Our cemetery foreman, which I don't believe that's his title anymore, is fully budgeted in the cemetery, yet they only have him for 26 weeks. So I'm wondering if keeping that same principle, we should budget-
50% in operations and 50% in cemetery?
Or 50% in Public Works.
Yeah, Public Works operations, that's what I meant.
And then the other 26 weeks, or whatever, for, see, so it truly reflects the manpower that they have for their 26 weeks versus payroll for salary on, for an individual that they don't have for half the year.
I, that's a good point, I, I, that needs to be researched, and, and we could do that. I, I read into this letter that they want the trustees want really confirmation that they have two more dedicated workers during the additional period.
12 more weeks.
Just, yes, just not the fact that we have DPW existing staff that could do the job.
Right, so they, they will be people- Right, so there will be people attending to the cemeteries for twenty-six weeks out of the year. That's what I get out of this letter.
Yes, but they don't want, trust me, workers already on the staff that could do the job, and when they're free from other tasks, we'll break them, we'll send them over that way. They want the confirmation that they're really there, dedicated.
I think we should have some discussion, know what Public Works on this. Because there are a few questions. I mean, the question is, can it be done with the existing personnel? Is that what they're looking for? And then the other issue about the designation of the allotments.
The existing personnel, I don't think stay on through October.
No, 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 not the existing seasonal help that they have, but help that workers from Public Works.
Oh.
That's what Nick was talking about.
I thought he was talking about seasonal ones, yeah.
Public Works seasonal people.
Yeah, I think they leave, though, before the end of October. They go back to town.
Well, that's why I said, I think we need that discussion.
Right, but I think financially, when you look at the department, if cemetery was charged for just twenty-six weeks of the foreman, and their seasonal people, plus an additional twelve weeks of seasonal, their probably operating budget's going to be less than what it is now.
The cemetery budget.
The cemetery, well, that's their true budget.
Right, but the DPW one will go up.
But that's where the true cost is.
But that's where the true cost is.
Yeah, I understand that, but it's still, it's a budget increase, so he needs, if you're going in this direction, to provide...
Public Works would need to increase their budget.
I mean, again, I, from what we heard a couple of weeks ago, there is a greater need than just the fourteen weeks. I mean, the growing season for the grass trimming, et cetera, it goes way beyond that. So it's, that's not, I got the impression that that was not happening, that after these seasonal cemetery workers go to school, or they go back, then it's, the, you know, the maintenance on the cemeteries is not where it should be, and that resources are not reallocated from DPW to then...
But we don't know that.
No, that was pretty, even from Carl, I kind of got that.
Yeah, that's a busy time of wrapping up the roads.
Right.
Before the asphalt plant is closed.
I kind of got that from Carl, too. So, it's just a matter of, you know...
How do you find a seasonal for twenty-six weeks? That's a long period of time.
Right, that's half a year.
Yeah.
Yeah. Currently, I don't think we'll have a problem with that. In the future, we may.
Well, your pool is going to be different. It's not going to be your college students working twenty-six weeks, because they got to get back to college.
Unless they couldn't find a job when they graduated.
It will be your ski instructor.
Yeah, I think we'll still, I think we'll find people.
Yeah.
It's just, just recognize it's a different pool.
Yeah.
If you're hiring for twenty-six weeks.
And I think the other issue is if we have a foreman who is paid for twenty-six weeks, let's say, I think he needs to be dedicated to the cemetery for those twenty-six weeks.
Hey, wait a minute, I need it here.
And he would have two seasonal workers for the whole twenty-six weeks.
He does my malt chip town hall, wait a minute.
But that's what I mean, you know, and it's just, it's fragmented, you don't, there are days where you don't have anyone there, or it's, you know, in charge, if you will, it's just your seasonal people and...
But as a cemetery foreman, doesn't he also work in the other twenty-six weeks?
Yeah, he does.
You're not dividing his year.
They don't do, they don't burials anymore in the wintertime.
Well...
Yeah, but they do more than twenty-six weeks out of the year.
Yeah.
I think the issue is really more like some of the other people that we have that do split jobs, where they may work one day fully at the cemetery, the next day they might be doing something at DPW, the next day, and I don't think it's just based upon twenty-six weeks, I think it's fifty percent of their time, but it's not really, that's where I got it. I think it's more it's fifty percent of their time, not the weeks.
Yeah, yeah, no. Yeah, because there's times that he might be there on the weekends.
So you want to discuss this with Carl?
Well, that's what I said, I mean, there are issues on it, and I think we should have that discussion.
I think the issue that the trustees are getting to is that the cemeteries need more maintenance beyond the fourteen weeks that they're currently getting. So Carl, what can you do to ensure that they are getting twenty-six weeks? Whether you need to hire more seasonal help, whether you need to realign, juggle them, but we should not be hearing from the trustees that, you know, after the kids go back to school, that the maintenance kind of, really kind of goes on the back burner, because we're wrapping up road projects. I mean, we have to kind of maintain...
We have the time to do this. The fourteen weeks that they're currently employed on cemetery care doesn't end till August, first week of August, so we have all of June, all of July to resolve this.
So you think it's going to be resolved this year, out of budget?
No, no, not out of the budget, but resolve it and how to go forward.
How will, plan going forward?
All right.
All right. You also have at tab sixty, an RFP for approval for the Parker Station Historic District Inventory. Derek submits this RFP for Board of Selectmen approval, it's subject to final approval by Governor and Council on the CLG grant, which, they did get it on the schedule.
Right.
We got notification today that it's on the June 8th schedule for GNC.
I'm moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Cessna Bartlett has written a memo stating the history of MAP 24 lot 44R10, and his recommendation to issue a confirmatory, quick claim deed. That's at sixteen.
Okay, is there any discussion on this?
Do we have that attached?
Pardon?
Is that quick claim deed attached?
Is it in the signature folder?
Oh, it's in the signature folder.
Make a motion to accept the town assessor's recommendation.
You're second?
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Okay, next week is the all boards meeting, and we'll start six to seven, just have a business meeting, get business pieces done.
Are you aware that this is like the same night as the debates?
Yes, I am.
What debates?
But it doesn't seem to have affected our RSVP.
Yeah, I know.
I've heard from everyone but three of the twenty-one committees.
Are we having our business meeting there first?
Yes, in the media center.
In the media center, okay.
And then at seven, the all boards meeting will start.
Okay.
What is the role of department heads in the all boards meeting this year?
Not that I'm aware of.
Bringing food?
We got that covered, light refreshments, okay.
It's usually Q and A, or I mean, if there's something that, I mean...
No presentations, huh?
No, no presentations.
They were asking what their role was, and I just...
Resource, you know.
Yeah, if some questions come up or something.
Okay.
Something needs to be clarified.
Thank you.
Networking, actually.
And networking.
What departments, what departments are we expecting there?
I would expect police, fire, DPW, Parks and Rec, library, and...
Okay, so all of them.
And I'll be there.
The library, we don't have any control over that.
Right, but they may want to share, well, the library trustee was invited, so they'll be there. Parks and Rec commission was invited, so they will have something to say. That's all I have for public.
That's all you have?
Yes.
Okay, so going back. Okay, so going into new business, which we've taken care of, which was the ordinance, then we're looking at our old business, which we have the town line signs. And I'll turn that over to David.
Yes, last year, this board indicated that it would be appropriate for the standard town line signs to be erected on all roads leading into our town, and I'm just going to quickly go through the roads that, they are, starting at Dunbarton, and then going clockwise. In Dunbarton, there are seven roads, Goram Pond, Page Hill, Tibbetts Hill, Black Brook, Snow, Monalola, and East Dunbarton. Now Hooksit, there's one road, it's Hooksit Road. In Manchester, East Dunbarton Road, Goffstown Back Road, Riverview Park Road, and then in, continuing in Manchester, in the Pernardville area, Roosevelt, Edmund, Bernard, Henrietta, Theopile, South Mass, Rockland, St. Ansem's Drive, Violet Street, and also Violet Street joining on to Edmund. Excuse me, that last one was Bedford, and then there's Bedford, there's six streets, which was Violet again. New Hampshire Route 114, Daniel Plummer Road, Walnut Road, Wallace Road, and Joppa Hill Road. And finally, in New Boston, we have six roads entering the town, Robey, Bog, New Boston, Parker, North Mast, and Parker Station Road. So I'd like to report that Public Works followed the direction of this board, and over the last two weeks, the thirty-one signs were put at the thirty-two roads I've just listed. There's one sign that shares its location with Tibbetts Hill and Black Brook Road, because those two roads come together, the apex of those roads are at the town line. So, and included in your report are pictures verifying that all thirty-one signs have been installed.
Nick, just a quick question to clarify, just refresh my memory. I know we talked about this last year. Did we ever take a vote to authorize the signs to go in? Okay, I just don't recall.
I remember.
I remember the discussion.
And this, and as I brought up last year, many of us know where the town lines are when you're in the Dunbarton or New Boston Bedford area, particularly troublesome in the Pernardville area, with our borders in the Manchester, and those, those signs are all up now. And this would be an appropriate, you know, it's the appropriate year, this is our 250th anniversary, it's appropriate to let those entering the town know that they're entering this town.
Okay, Nick?
I would want the 250th committee ought to recognize that.
I'll put a sticker on each one of the signs this weekend.
I acknowledge, I acknowledge that, and I do think it's important for those roads going in and out. I just question some of the smaller side streets, where we're not going to really set boundaries, people don't go by that when they determine if they're going to pay taxes to the town, or... It's mostly the Pernardville area. You know, some of the streets that are either dead end or less than a quarter of a mile, four or five houses, and they have one or two signs.
That was my thing, too, it was just seeing, there was a handful, I mean, I think, I'm great with, I think, twenty-seven of them, I think, but it was four that, you know, the Violet, I mean, the Violet one, I mean, the gentleman comes in, it was probably the most egregious of all, of all the signs, it's in an area that's like, almost like it's a cul-de-sac, or, I mean, it's a loop. Everything else, I think, you know, I think there are, I think it is important to know what town you're in, you know, there was just a few that, you want to keep them all, I guess, right?
I would keep all of them up.
What about if we took one down and like gave it to you as a gift?
I would not accept that.
You would not, and you put it in your bedroom or something.
I don't know if we could give town property away like that.
Oh, I would personally pay...
We'd have to have a public hearing. Might have to be noticed twice, and we have to wait fourteen days for our vote. Well, I mean, I can understand the board not perhaps realizing that there were thirty-one signs, I mean, they are done.
Wait five years, and maybe they all won't be up, and then we can realign the resources to where they're needed.
Oh, boy.
But these were, yes, they were, Public Works Director was not happy with the expense of purchasing these signs, but he did it, it's been done, and they've been installed.
I can think of six signs that we could take down and have extras, in case some are missing, going into the future.
No, I would not concur with that. All of these are letting people know that they're entering the town.
In some cases, leaving as well.
Yeah?
On Violet Street.
It's May 10th, 2010.
Thank you.
Phil made the motion.
It wasn't a motion, just as the board agreed.
Yeah, see, that's what I mean, I don't ever remember we took a vote, and I think it was left that we were going to discuss it.
There are seventeen locations lacking post.
Yes, of the thirty-one potential signs, only five were installed. So, you know, that was a deplorable state at that point in time. Now we're at one hundred percent satisfaction, and you want to go backwards?
No, I'm just trying to see when it was we actually approved it.
So much for the 250th celebration.
Well, we signed off on the, on the warrant that paid for the signs.
Yeah, there was a consensus, there wasn't an actual vote, there appeared to be a consensus, and that's what the minutes reflect.
Oh, gosh.
I don't hear a motion.
All I know is that for a prank, I'm going to put one in your... With a pink form in there or something.
How many signs on there?
Only thirty.
All together?
Yeah, because Selectmen Pierce said we had thirty-one roads into town, and we only have signs installed.
Technically, there's thirty-two roads crossing the boundary line, thirty-one signs. One sign does double duty.
It's the one on Black Brook.
I was very conservative, and I saved a little money on that one sign.
And Nick, I could just clarify, if you read this, there was some ambivalence on the board as to whether to go forward with it, and if I'm reading it correctly, Selectmen Pierce said you were going to put a presentation together. Vice Chairman Devanza said he'll come back with a presentation, and we agreed to that.
What date was that?
May 10th, 2010? Is that the one you referred, you were referencing?
So it must have been after that.
It must have been.
It must have been something after. Well, they're up, so, I mean, so it's just a matter of, they're up, and does anybody want to take a couple down? I mean, my only, I mean, the Violet one is kind of, that's the, that area there just doesn't make a lot of sense to me, because, I mean, if you look at the sign, too, it's like, it's in someone's front yard, for crying out loud.
It's at the boundary line between two properties.
No, no, I understand that.
Technically, the line is, runs parallel three feet off their house.
I don't know, do you typically see these signs in like, you know, a loop in a residential area, or do you see them on a main, you know, kind of more of like a main or even a tertiary road? I would say...
I would see, you see the sign where the town line is, that's where you see them.
I mean, I grew up in an area that...
I think it's an informative sign to tell a traveler that you are now in a new town.
Right.
That's the purpose of the sign. It's not for the residents of the street to know that they're home, it's for other people who are traveling that street.
So...
To be aware that they're now in the next town.
But I would think it's, that's a through street, but for instance, Violet Street, you're in Manchester, you go down the street, you're in Goffstown, you go around the corner, you come back, and now you're in Bedford.
Correct.
Is there a Bedford sign? Is there a Bedford sign?
The adjoining communities have not put up their other signs as yet.
Are they going to follow suit now?
Public Works will notify the other towns that they're available to pull her up.
Can you make a motion, for the heck, just for the sake, to remove Roosevelt, Edmund, Henrietta, Theopile, and the two Violet Streets?
You'll have to repeat those for me, please.
Roosevelt Street, Edmund Street, Edmund, Henrietta.
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 Okay.
Theopile.
Yes.
And two Violet Streets. And all the others are through streets, major travel.
I'll second that for discussion, I got to hear this one.
Why would, yeah. I, I could lean your way on Violet Street.
But it's...
But it's... You're taking half the signs leading into the Parnardvilles area from Manchester down. Those are the most, those are the most important ones I'd want up.
Yeah, and those are the ones people cut through.
But again, there's, okay, I'm just being practical here, if I'm a traveler and I'm driving, I'm going down Parnard Street to go from Manchester to Goffstown, I'm going up College, excuse me, Mast Road, or St. Ansem Drive. If I cut through, I'm a person who knows the area, I know where I am.
What if you're making a delivery?
What if, making, what if you're a renter, and all you know is you have a Manchester address, and that's all you, your landlord has told you, your Manchester address, but now you're driving by a sign that says you're entering a different town, something's going to sink in.
And the first time I register my car, it's going to sink in, because I have to register in Goffstown.
No, if you go to Manchester, they'll take your money. You live in, your address is Manchester, so you're going to go to Manchester, Manchester takes your money. Manchester sends Goffstown residents auto renewal registrations, they send them renewal for dog licenses, and people go to Manchester and they pay it. This is telling people that it's Goffstown.
And when you leave, you don't know where you're going to.
I think we should table this for Selectment before you...
I mean, it's blank, right, when you leave?
You make a motion.
I'm summarizing your conversation.
Making a motion to table this until Selectment four years...
Well, we already have a motion on the table.
You seconded it, Scott.
I, I did?
Yes, for discussion.
Is there any further discussion?
Don't necessarily want to vote tonight, because...
Well, I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Wait for Steve.
Nick? Nick and Scott were yes, and Phil and Dave were no.
Can't make the same motion?
Motion fails.
Motion failed.
Next.
Okay, is there any other old business?
I'm glad I was so successful.
Committee reports, economic development, he's not here. Historic district, they met last week.
Six out of thirty-two, that's a good...
Conservation Commission?
Good odds there, Dave. Conservation Commission, we did meet, and you have a report after seven C. The Conservation Commission put off the appointment of their officers until the, the board voted on filling vacancies. There were some recommendations that were forwarded to the, to the board. We did get an open space committee update, there was no meeting held. David Niemann, though, will supply staff with a list of the committee members, and also they will be posting their meetings as the board requested. There's also some discussion regarding CIP, and the discussion centered around whether there should be a request to deal with future needs such as the milfoil, removing Japanese knotweed, so that there would be a, a line to be able to handle requests like that. There was also a review of the Family Dollar Store site plan, and our next meeting will be June twenty-ninth.
Any questions, Nick?
I'll just make mention that that is a change in your normal meeting date, because you normally would meet on the twenty-second.
Yes, correct.
And now you're going on the twenty-first.
Thank you for that clarification, yes, it was moved. The twenty-second to the twenty-ninth.
It's already been reposted that way.
Planning Board did meet, and there was one thing on the agenda, which was a time extension request, or approved, nine lot subdivision, which was the Anna King Trust on Shirley Hill Road and Kennedy Hill Road, and that was approved for a year, extended to May twenty-seventh, and that was the extent of the planning board. And it's CIP meet?
CIP did meet, we had a presentation from Public Works, they also gave a short presentation from the cemetery. Trustees? I'm trying to think what else did we have that evening? That was it?
Okay. Any questions, Nick?
Oh, fire. Getting my meetings mixed up.
Well, you had fire before.
Fire that before, yeah.
One of your first ones.
Okay.
Any other business? I think on the new business, though, I think we, do we want to review any of our rules and procedures?
We talked about that. And that was specific to these, you know, this, the appointment process.
Do you want me to put that on for next week?
Yeah, could you?
Oh, not next week, that's the all boards meeting, the meeting after that.
Yeah, okay, let's do that.
That'll be the twentieth? Yes.
It'll be what date?
Twentieth, June twentieth. June twentieth would be then, and that would be on the agenda.
Okay. All right. Do we have any other thing in public? Because if not, then we will reconvene our non-public.
I just have one, just a real quick, short item. I noticed today, going, but the, the, one of the flags of the bridges, it broke off, and it's suspended in the tree.
Oh, it is?
Just below, yeah. So maybe if somebody, Public Works or somebody can retrieve it, you can't reach it from the bridge.
You can't, huh?
No.
Okay.
Kind of wrapped up in a branch.
Is it? Okay. All right. So if we have no other public business, motion to resume?
We were in on public, so...
Right, to resume non-public. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote call?
Yes.
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 And this one will be under B, B hiring.
Okay, under B hiring, okay.